We'll now convene our council study session. The first item, and again, I'll note for the record that all of our council are present, and Mr. Thompson is traveling in excuse. Item 1A on our agenda for this meeting is a presentation and to provide direction on general obligation bond items for the 2022 election, including a proposed public safety bond.
Good morning.
Welcome, Beth. I know during our budget hearings, we alluded to this idea, and looking forward to learning more about it.
So this morning, I want to, as Mayor mentioned, I'd like to visit with you a little bit about the projects we are proposing for public safety in a potential bond election this fall. One of the really cool things about my job is we get to see the future a bit when we work with our departments. Probably, I guess, the closest you'll ever get to a time capsule or a time machine, but it is kind of fun to look out into the future and see it. And so this morning, you're going to see what our public safety departments really need out into the future. There are about seven items on the bond election, and I'm going to go through each one so you can see each one. So some of you know and are familiar with Fire Station Number 205, which is located right now in Greenfield Park on the corner of Greenfield. It was built in 1978, and it's in very much in need of some TLC and some upgrades and rebuilds for this site. So we've included that on the list for $16.8 million for a rebuild of this station. We're also including new Fire Station 223, which is at McDowell and Lindsay, adjacent to the water plant. We own the land there, which makes it a really good situation for us, and it also fits where the data really thinks we need, some of these stations in the north side. Fire Station 224, you can see it kind of there on the right. This is at 80th Street and Elliott, kind of in the inner loop area. Again, a site that we currently own, which makes it a little more readily available to us to build on and fits the heat map pretty well. This one will also include some apparatus, as well the previous one for the station. And this is the public safety training facility. This facility is, has a lot of needs. It's been here for quite a while. Just a little quick update, we have done some projects recently. You can see the new drive track is a bright new black color. We've renovated it. The burn building, I'm proud to say, after many years, will be complete here in the next month or so, so if you haven't seen it, get out to see it. We also have put in a live burn facility in the facilities you've probably already seen, renovated the smoke tower. We are in the process of renovating these classrooms for EMT training, and the lockers in this area on the existing building have been completely renovated for fire. If you have been out there on a training day, you know it's a very busy facility, and there's very few places to park. And they struggle with not enough space for staff, for trainers, and for classrooms. So what we're proposing in this bond election is two buildings in this area in front of the auditorium, primarily for admin classrooms and other things that we need for the site. So when someone comes into the site to do training, they've got a place to go, as well as the recruits have classrooms. We're also including new parking, because parking comes at a premium on training days, so we'll be adding that. And there's some minor stormwater facilities we need to put in, a basin and some piping to accommodate what happens during rain at the facility. The police evidence facility, we've talked about this before. The 2018 bond had a project in it to do the evidence facility. With inflation and with the needs of our community, the growing community that we have, there isn't sufficient funding for that, so we are including additional funding in this bond program, about $11.3 million. Police headquarters located up on Ropes. And this building, this building's been around the block a few times. It was originally built in '74, added on to in '88, and then again in '97. It's in need of some major renovation, full renovation of all floors, including a lot of what I think of as the bones of the facility, the electrical service entrance, the HVAC, all of that needs to be renovated. So it's a pretty major project. It's $43.4 million on the list. And there's the summary of our projects. The last item on the list that I didn't have a slide is for fire replacement apparatus. We're putting in about $10 million. That's just an ongoing need. These are substantial financial investments for the city, and we do bond for the larger apparatus.
Thank you. Mr. Luna?
As far as the fire apparatuses, are we going to look at maybe electrical vehicles?
So we'll certainly look at it. We need to get the first one in and see how it rolls out. It takes so, there's such a long lead time on these, on the apparatus, so I think we have to figure out what matches up with our needs. So I certainly think that's something we'll look at, but at the same time, we also just need to get some apparatus to replace the ones that have lots of hours on it. So I'm sure that as we get the one that we've ordered, and we've had some time with it, and if it performs well, that would be something to consider in the future.
Now, as far as the fire stations, assuming, we're hoping that our voters will support this, are we thinking that it'll be four years from now when they're actually completed?
At least four years. So if we get the money in November and start, we'll just have to prioritize them in which order that the fire department wants to proceed with, and we'll get going on them. But yeah, generally, it's four to six years to get everything built.
Right, and the one on 30th Second and Lindsay, around...
Over by the plant, the tree by the plant.
Yeah, that's a gap area, right? So that's probably one that I would...
Both of them are.
Both of them are.
Yeah, advocate that we get going right away. The police headquarters, yes, it needs, it's a very dated building. It needs to be retrofitted, uplifted, so do whatever we can to make it visually appealing, aesthetically appealing. Thank you.
Ms. Pillsbury?
Hi. On Fire Station 205, so a rebuild, like you're taking it down and rebuilding the whole thing, or more like renovation, or you're restarting from scratch?
Well, there's some, there's a lot of discussions yet to be had on that. We will get a, if this is approved by the voters, we will get an architect on board, and we will look at a couple of different alternatives for this site. We, you know, the land is limited at this location, so we may, we'll need to get pretty creative with this site.
Can you go into the park at all?
No.
No, you can't?
No, there are restrictions, there are federal restrictions on the land.
Okay. Yeah, just since it's the same exact cost as like the brand-new buildings, I'm curious about that.
It'll be pretty close to a new building.
Okay. So we wouldn't be able to have firefighters in that station while you're doing that?
No, no.
No, they will have to be relocated temporarily.
Okay, that's kind of smacked up in my district, so. And then on the police safety, do we own all that land going north, or is that another business?
Yes.
You know, like above the new parking? Is that still all?
We, you know, we own all of that.
So is all of that that's parked there, though, another, is another business leasing that, or is that all of our junk?
No, that's...
Yes, that is our junk.
That's our junk.
It looks like junk, maybe it's not junk on here.
No, it is.
No, it's junk.
Okay, so we do, we do still have some area for growth, then?
Right.
We have, we have opportunities to be more efficient in the use of the land.
Okay.
So one of the things that I'm asking for is a master plan, and it's kind of like, you know, after a while, you have to drag out, you have lots of equipment, lots of things we practice on, old cars, buses, whatever.
Yeah, yeah, right.
At some point, we need to go back there and kind of work on that, because we're not short of land for the training facilities. We just probably need to spend more time coming up with a master plan. And, you know, you have police and fire both out there, they have different demands. And what's happening, too, is obviously as we're growing and adding police and firemen, the classes that we bring in continue to get bigger and bigger and bigger. So we need both classroom space, and we just need parking logistics, and so all those things will be considered. We're just, actually, we just gave you blocks of kind of definition of space, but we need to go in and do a comprehensive kind of master plan to see how we'd use all the space over time, yeah.
Isn't that the burn building, like right there by the new parking?
So it's, actually, the burn building is right where I have the arrow. It's, you can see the foundations that, it's right adjacent to the track.
Oh, a little up above that, just above that.
Right, so that.
Right here?
This is an earlier photo, but today, if you go out there, it's, it's a building.
Yeah.
Okay.
You might want to get out before they start burning on it.
Okay. And that all would be able to remain open while they're putting in buildings and stuff?
Oh, yeah, there's lots of space.
All this, all that's being proposed is on vacant land today.
Okay. Well, and kind of into the parking a little bit, right? Or where it's, I don't know. Yeah, okay. And then my last question was just, when was the last time we had a public safety bond?
2018.
And so, okay, 2018, and so that money's pretty much used in...
Well, it's obligated, right? We still have to finish off...
We have projects.
Brown and Power, Public Safety Complex, what else is out there?
More apparatus.
More apparatus.
Okay.
But those are already, we're well on our way. But then, again, I think, as Councilwoman said, we've already, we'd already identified these two, next two areas, as areas where we've seen the demand continue to grow, and our response times don't maintain our standards. And they're, they're far enough out, and they're, the density of calls, and it's nice, we already have the land, it allows us to move and put more fire stations in.
And four years isn't, I mean, that's pretty normal, our average for public safety.
Pretty much.
Okay. And so the new fires, fire headquarters wouldn't be part of this, that would be the next bond.
We'll have to look at the future, yeah.
Okay, all right. Sorry, guys.
Was that a plug?
Well, yeah, I just know they need it done, too, so. Okay, that's all, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah. I know in the past, as far as information on how much tax, resident on the secondary property tax is, how much would this add to that? Do we have those figures?
Yeah, it's going to be close between about $43, $45.
Okay.
A year.
A year, right?
Sorry, yes.
Okay.
Annually, yeah.
And what's our total bond package for the election outside of public safety?
This is all we're proposing.
Oh, this is, there won't be anything for...
We're not proposing anything else.
For other capital, okay, thank you.
Back to the fire apparatus. I think we can build the chassis all we can for the electric fire trucks, but it's the battery component I think we're waiting on, because they're made overseas, and, oh, here comes Chief Johnson, but I think that was the procurement of the battery being made and then shipped over to the U.S. for placement in the truck. So we're competing with another state, I believe, on the first electric fire truck in the United States. Chief?
So Councilmember Freeman, Mayor, the LA County, sorry, LA City, just received their Rosenbauer truck, I think, last week, so that's out there. We have a E1 unit. We actually went back a couple weeks ago and got to tour and ride in their production one. So this is the first one that they've built. It is very good. They will start building ours, and we'll take ours in, hopefully, well, it's in the contract by December.
Okay.
So.
Thanks, that's all I have.
It's looking good.
So we'll have the first domestically manufactured electric fire truck?
Yes.
Maybe the second in the country, first domestically produced.
Yeah.
That's great. Other questions, council? I think this is obviously the right thing to do. It's, I enjoy going to these facilities and seeing them crawling with people and being very much overutilized. That's certainly the case at the training facility with the multiple academies that are going on simultaneously. So, and the, with the growth of our community and the heat map, you know, any reasonable voter that looks into this is going to be quick to support it, but I think it's incumbent on all of us to, that realize this is a campaign that we're launching, and we are going to the voters and saying, would you please give us $43 of your, more a year of your money, which is, that's a pretty serious ask, so I think we all just, yes, we need, we need to put this on the ballot, but more importantly, we need to work with labor groups and anyone else, you know, to get a campaign out there to help people understand why it's important to vote for it. Okay, thank you very much. I don't believe this calls for a vote. Are we, when?
We'll bring back a future, future action for council to place it on the ballot. Thank you, Mayor.
So a month or two from now is when we have to put it on the ballot, right?
Weeks, yeah.
June?
June 6.
Okay, thank you. Next item, item 1B is a presentation and to provide direction on the proposed citywide diversity initiative, Together Mesa. Andrea and Anna, welcome.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. I am so thrilled to be here with you this morning to launch our new citywide diversity initiative, Together Mesa. So I am Andrea Ellicott. I am the Diversity and Special Projects Manager here at the city.
Good morning, Anna Pareda, Communications Director for the City of Mesa.
And then we also have in the audience with us Lindsey Belinky and Tanya Gerard, who represent our Community Engagement Division here at the city. So Together Mesa, as we all know here, we have such rich diversity within our communities, such rich cultures, people, perspective, ideals. So our new diversity initiative is a way to really celebrate and amplify those voices that are within our community, and give us a big boat to kind of tie in the efforts that we have been already doing within our city throughout many, many years. So my position here at the city is really to help lead the direction, the strategy, advise on policy, assist the city manager in those decision-making efforts. But I would be remiss to say that it is every single one of our employees that fold the advancement of our diversity equity and inclusion efforts within their work. So it is our museum curators who are preserving the history of our community. It is our communications folks that are finding innovative ways to be able to reach our public. It is our neighborhood outreach and volunteer coordinators that are working directly with the public. You know, the list goes on and on and on. For everyone that has this element, our engineers who are, you know, designing those accessible spaces, and then the crews that are constructing them. So there are so many folks that touch this work, and I just have the honor and privilege of being able to speak to it. So with that, I'm going to pull up, we have a lovely video that encapsulates the message of Together Mesa.
The many voices that make up our community, we are Together Mesa.
Celebrating the people and the communities that make up our city, Together Mesa.
And of course, those are all people, events, places, that are right here in our beautiful city, and we are so excited to be able to showcase that. So the vision for Together Mesa as an initiative is really to reflect our community. So there are three main goals that we are looking to do to achieve that, and first being visibility. We want to, of course, increase our awareness about our City of Mesa programs and services, and ensuring that they're accessible and available to all. Positioning, that our key messages are really able to resonate and reflect our diverse community. And then connectivity. We want to strengthen those connections with our, with our public, our daily residents. We want to be able to encourage new communities and voices to be able to have a presence here in our community. A great example of that just recently, the South Pacific Island Festival that had their annual launch this year. That was a new community group. They have been here within our community for decades, but they had never felt that they were able to be really visible and have a presence. And so they had reached out to me. We had found a way to be able to connect them with downtown Mesa and have their wonderful annual kickoff event. And it was really like our techs and licensing department and all of our staff that really held them by the hand to help walk them through the processes to make that event happen. And so we want to thank, again, staff for really stepping up and being that reflection. We have several approaches that we're going to take to achieve this. So effective communication, Anna's going to speak a little bit more to those methods, but it really comes, again, to expressing and translating our messages so that it reaches all. Meaningful engagement, this is building those relationships. This is the listening part for us to be able to learn and grow. And then number three, showcasing those perspectives. We need to have our community be able to see themselves in all of the messaging that we put out in our programs and services, so that they know that we are truly there for everyone that is out in our community. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Anna to speak to the first strategy.
So communications is very crucial to the support of Together Mesa. And the reason why is that we wouldn't be doing our job communicating in the Public Information and Communications Office if we were not reaching out to the diverse communities in the city and amplifying the voices through everything that we're doing. So we do it in several ways. First is storytelling, and that is the part where we tell our residents, the community in the valley overall, about what makes Mesa unique and a great place to live, work, and play. And those stories need to reflect the diverse community that we have here in the City of Mesa. And we do that through the many stories that we see on Channel 11, that we see on social media. And we actively work with all the city departments that have a social media presence, our museums, neighborhood outreach, even our public safety agencies, to create these type of messages that resonate and celebrate our community. Part of this is Days of Significance, for example. It's a, it's a big part of the push, but also, like I said, what are the different stories of the people of Mesa that make this place unique? The second part of what we do in the Public Communications Office is multicultural communications, and there are several aspects to this. There is the traditional PR and reaching out and working with, having very strong relationships with our multicultural media partners. So those are the Asian, for example, Asian publications and newspapers, our Spanish, television, radio, and print media blogs, and various, various mediums that are in the community in the multicultural space. The next part of that is also communicating multilingual communications, and that is the Spanish communication primarily, since 30% of our population is, identifies itself as Latino. There is a large contingency that speaks some Spanish. So we are communicating with them in Spanish, one, through our Mesa en Español group. We constantly put together content, and this is information that is about our programs, services, events, really things that our population needs to know, right? As well as some of those stories. And then we're also, like I said, actively reaching out to Spanish-language media. So last week, for example, on average, we have at least one media hit on Spanish-language media a week. Last week, for example, it was Mariano Regis talking to Prince Arizona, which is the largest Spanish-language newspaper here in the valley, about how to dispose of hazardous material. Those are things that our community needs to know, and we're reaching out to them in this way as well. And then there's also awareness campaigns. So, for example, what we did with redistricting, in addition to, to bringing the message through just advertising and our, and social media to the general English-speaking market, we also did, did so in Spanish. So we did a social media campaign, paid social media campaign in Spanish along with English language, and we also had ads on Spanish newspapers. Then there is the communication style. And this is, this particular pertains to what we do in the multicultural, multi-language space. So looking at really how do other cities in, for example, in Mexico, given our closeness to the border and Mexico, looking at how are governments in Mexico communicating with their constituents? So looking at the formality of the language that it's used, and changing that. The City of Mesa used to communicate with our Spanish residents using the very formal usted, and that will resonate with Councilmember Luna and Councilmember Pareda, but we've changed that to tú, which is a more informal, it allows us to create a better relationship, closeness in communication with our residents. We're also ensuring that all of our communication that is multilingual is correct. We don't want to put something in another language that we wouldn't necessarily do in English. So it has been developing the process and gathering the tools that will allow us to have a quality control over our multilingual communications, and that is very important. And in that sense, and like I said, is utilizing our different tools to, to communicate with our residents. And then there are track metrics. And with social media, we have the fortune that we, we use certain software that allow us to isolate content and really see the performance. And I'm very happy to report that in organic social media, we've had over 340,000 impressions over the last year, 20,000 engagements, just in the diversity content, regardless of language. And the numbers for our en Español social media pages are similar. And starting in July, we're going to be also tracking our, our Spanish-language public relations efforts to also to make sure what is working, what isn't, and what are the areas that we need to improve on.
Thank you. So with that, I just also want to highlight some of the other efforts that are going on throughout the city. Our Human Relations Advisory Board is a wonderful advisory board to Mayor and Council, and they do similar work out in the community. They have a new program that they're launching in alignment with this effort called the Community Learning Series. It's going to be a YouTube channel where we are showcasing individual perspectives, taking personal accounts of just various individuals throughout our community, and using it as an education tool to be able to, once again, showcase who is living here in Mesa, but also having the community educate us, educate themselves in terms of different, you know, either identities, cultural norms, things that help us understand the different elements that they may celebrate and honor and are important to them. Our community impact, we, within the Diversity Office, manage our civil rights compliance, nondiscrimination ordinance, Americans with Disabilities Act. So there's a lot of education that goes out with that effort, education to business owners, individuals, and so that aid to be able to further advance that information in our community. We have a program within our city that really highlights now our Spanish bilingual staff members. They all have buttons that they wear to identify themselves, to make themselves a lot more accessible. And then again, through the work of Anna's team, our Community Engagement Team, we're doing a lot more to amplify the availability of that staff. And then there's other ongoing efforts. Once again, we all are aware of the Alston House, such a gem within our community, other points of significance that we're really developing robust programming around. The other effort that the city manager and myself have really highlighted over the past several years is our internal employee engagement. We do that through supporting employee resource groups. We have very active groups through our Mesa Hispanic Network and National Forum for Black Public Administrators National Chapter here, that our very own Travis Cutwright is the chapter president for. So the best educators and, and resources that we have are, once again, our very own employees. And so giving them the platform to be able to create programming and elevate that and reflect that within our own workplace culture has really elevated our inclusive environment. We, last year, we launched a cultural celebration, which was our, used as our employee appreciation event, and that was an open invitation to every single employee to come to celebrate our Hispanic Heritage Month, but also be able to, once again, reflect this inclusive environment that we have created here as a workforce. And then lastly, supporting our community celebrations. Being able to highlight and reflect those significant heritage months or Days of Significance with those local stories and histories that we have have been just instrumental in exacerbating kind of what we are... kind of what we are doing here in the city, creating a bigger representation at significant events and community events such as our Phoenix Pride Parade, which is our kind of statewide effort to celebrate the LGBTQ plus community. And then supporting those local organizations that tell their story best. We have so many wonderful community groups. There's the Culture Coalition with their Mask Alive event. There is the Zen Knights Organization, a vegan black party that happens regularly, our South Pacific Islander Festival, the Martin Luther King Celebration Committee and their annual parade, the Veterans Committee, the list just once again goes on and on and on. And so our work is to really support those community groups to be able to give them that platform. So with that, as you can see, our Together Mesa initiative is really the umbrella and the bow that ties all of this wonderful work together. It gives us an opportunity to speak more openly about all the wonderful things that are happening. So we encourage the public to go to www.mesaac.gov backslash Together Mesa to learn more. And then of course, use the hashtag Together Mesa because we are after all Together Mesa. So thank you, mayor and council for your ongoing support in this effort, the city manager as well. We are just very happy for this wonderful place that we are within our efforts today.
Thank you very much. I know just the fact that you're sitting here giving this presentation is something that a lot of people in our community are grateful for. And it, thank you to Mr. Brady, and thank you to this organization for elevating this topic to where it is right now. This is very gratifying. Questions, Mr. Luna?
Thank you, Andrea. That's great. You're doing a great job. I'm glad that you were able to bring everything together because things were happening, but you know, we're hit and miss, but through your leadership and your organization, working with the Human Relations Advisory Board as well as external groups, you've been able to actually put this together and make it a viable department. Thank you for your, for your leadership there. Are we doing anything internally in terms of diversity training with our employees? Are you offering that internally?
Yes, thank you, mayor and councilmember Luna, again, for the support and recognition of this. So there was recent legislation that we were waiting on here at the state level that has guided some direction on what local governments can do regarding training. And so with that in mind, now that we have that direction, we are able to reflect a lot of what, again, the campaign that we have here, the cultural celebrations, the education of the community groups that we have within our community, this is the way that we are able to now reflect that training internally. So yes, to, long answer short is we have been working with our HR department to make sure that, again, diversity, equity, and inclusion is folded into the training, and we will be offering more education of the cultural awareness of groups as we move forward.
Put boundaries on what we can do.
Correct.
Okay, because I remember 20 years ago when I was involved in Human Relations Advisory Board, we had, you know, internal training for staff members, but obviously things have changed over the span of 20 years. So thank you, and I appreciate all that you do. And Anna, thank you for what you do as far as communication. You know, since you've been here, we've had a lot of outreach to Univision, Telemundo, Prensa Hispana, which we really didn't have in the past, it was hit and miss, but now it's a lot more focused. So thank you for doing that, for giving the city of Mesa opportunity to tell their story in Spanish. And so I appreciate your leadership in that. So I'm excited to see what the future holds. Congratulations.
Mr. Heredia?
You know, I echo the same words, Councilmember Luna. Are we looking at, in the city, the departments are more public facing, like police and fire, parks, even the planning department, you know, some concern sometimes that folks just don't know how to navigate or try to, try to get, you know, information around, you know, how do you do an info project within the land that you own and things like that? Are we looking at strategies to maybe lessen the burden on our residents and small business owners that are sometimes not very comfortable, either language barrier or just don't see their ability to reach out to the city? It could be because of necessity or, like I said, language. Are we looking at strategies, how do we kind of narrow the gap there sometimes in that, in those types of issues?
Yes, thank you, mayor, councilmember Heredia. This year, we have launched two new groups that are really going to help us with those types of efforts. So we have a Diversity Champions Group, which is a liaison from each department. That is really my, you know, reach into the departments to be able to provide education, the tools that the city has, such as we have language and interpretation contracts. And so those services are readily available at the fingertips. And so a lot of it is just really providing the departments more resources, more education on how to utilize these tools that are in place. And then also through Anna and myself, we have also with the PIO and communications have now formed also an additional diversity communications group, if you will, an informal title at this point. And that goes to where every month we are really talking about the days of significance that we want to highlight, but then more importantly, what are those significant messages that we need to find multiple ways to be able to get out? And it's not even just a language barrier, it can be things like Easy English, or where are we pushing those messages and how are we targeting different communities? And so both of these groups really take the bird's eye view of resources and help us be able to identify and problem solve some of those issues.
And mayor, councilmember Heredia, we are actively, like she said, we have the diversity group, communications group, which is different department PIOs that work together to identify these days of significance, but also making sure that when we do awareness campaigns on different topics, like for example, we have currently one running on, it's called the Dog Days of Summer, and we're informing our residents about how to take care of our pets in the summer. So as part of our effort is translating graphics and videos, you saw one of the videos of the subtitle with the dog. So that information is getting to our residents in Spanish as well as pitching to and releases, working with Spanish media to get that information out there. Like I said, that example that I gave about the hazardous waste materials, we've been doing a lot of outreach, for example, so people know. Our Economic Development Department, where there are different classes to business owners, they're also doing that in Spanish. So we're all working together to make sure that this is not an afterthought, but part of the strategy.
Great, thank you. Other questions or comments?
Good morning. Thank you for this presentation. We've been talking about it for a while, and I'm thrilled to see it all come together and integrated throughout whatever we do. And I know as a city, and I just wanted to make sure that in our, like our council priorities and initiatives and all the things that we do as a city that we're interwoven with these principles of diversity, equity, and inclusion, and that is who Mesa is, it's just not some programming. And I love that it's very comprehensive, it goes beyond cultural to include maybe all ages, seniors, abilities, lifestyles, so that everybody feels that they are part of our community, recognized and celebrated. And I'll just say that I believe the diversity of our communities are strength and beauty, and I appreciate this being part of who we are. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Philsbury?
Okay, fine, I'll say something. I love all of this, you know, I love it. I think it's just so empowering for people, like I picture little kids to see themselves represented, right? In whatever way that is. And so I just, I think it's incredible and empowering, and I think it's beautiful. And I, kind of through the presentation, I was thinking, we're already doing all of this, so what's kind of the point of this initiative? But you know, as you went through the whole thing, I can really see the wisdom in making it a program, right? Pulling it all together and having a hashtag and having a website where people can go to, and I think that will just make it bigger and stronger. So way to go.
Let me just echo some of the things that both these ladies just said. I think it's important that this not be a campaign, right? This is, this is not something that's going to have an end, right? This is the new, this is our DNA, this is our core values as a community. So I know during our strategic planning meeting a couple of months ago, Vice Mayor observed that we might need to figure out how to verbalize this value into our core values as a community, maybe a little more specifically. So I look forward to maybe some input, some suggestions from you ladies and others about how to best do that. I love the events that we're doing and the fact that we're getting better organized and when it comes to managing events. We have a downtown now that is in demand for hosting events, and we need to be a little more sophisticated in the way that we do that. And I think we need to prioritize these diversity, these events that celebrate diversity. You know, the South Pacific Islander event, as you indicated, is one that we ought to do our best to have it be an annual event. And the Asian festivals that we've seen in Councilmember Heredia's district, crowd control is the problem there. They're just, they are very, very, people have an appetite, no pun intended, you know, for those events. And obviously Dia de los Muertos and the other. So I think, just to state the obvious, that's who we are. That's Mesa's bragging point is our diversity, and we need to really be good at celebrating that, and we are. But I just, again, the fact that we're focusing internally on our organization, what we can do to strengthen our diversity here, but likewise, but in addition to that, nurturing and supporting the community and helping people identify this as one of Mesa's strengths is just something I applaud you for, and I think we're anxious to support you in that. So any, I know this isn't an action item, but again, just thank you so much for all you're doing. We look forward to doing more and supporting you in that.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Our next item on our agenda is current events and conferences attended. I know you, it's a very busy time of year, we could probably spend an hour talking about this topic, but anybody like to start us off? Mr. Luna?
Thank you, mayor. It's been a busy week, but I'll only touch on a few things because all of us attended the same events together. The ASU tour was amazing, so it was, I'm so proud of that building and what it's going to be and what it represents for the city of Mesa. And the students that are going to be attending that school are very, very fortunate because the facilities are amazing. I know Glenn and I were jealous, Glenn from Channel 11, because it's a beautiful facility and our backgrounds in television, and those studios are phenomenal. I mean, comparable to what you see in Hollywood, but it's an amazing facility, and I look forward to the school opening, it's going to be very exciting. Yesterday had an opportunity to visit Intercostal Electronics Tour, which is in East Mesa. It's what they do is it's an engineering company that designs, develops, and manufactures, tests, and supports live training solutions that increase firefighters' effectiveness worldwide. I was able to learn what they do, they were, I think, an offshoot of McDonnell Douglas, and, but it was, it's an amazing company located in East Mesa. And so I want to thank Economic Development for giving us the opportunity to tour these facilities, because it's important that we retain these companies, we want them to stay in Mesa, but they also need to know that they have city support. So I appreciate the leadership of Economic Development to ensure that we show them as councilmembers, like the officials, that we support what they do for our community. So that's it, and I'll let my other colleagues speak on the other things that we do.
Thank you. Mr. Freeman?
Thank you to Councilmember Luna, and to the ASU tour, I really appreciated that, what I did learn too. They're going to have some camps starting in June, next month, as well as students starting in August. So I'm excited about this forthcoming ASU programming. Had the opportunity to go to Hermosa Vista School and participate in a career path, a career for sixth graders, and I don't know how many of you had that opportunity at sixth grade, but I never did. I mean, the teachers helping focus children about certain career paths, I thought was really important. So we had a police officer, firefighter, an optometrist, an ASU researcher, an elected official, not only elected official was there, but otherwise. It was a fun, a fun time there. I also, last night, we had a community safety fair at Central Christian Church, and it turned out really well, and I want to thank all the staff that attended. We had, Councilmember Luna came by with Antonia and appreciated that, and there was a lot of networking and collaboration during that time. So we have a second one this coming Monday on South Chestnut, the Holy Trinity Church, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. And it'll be the Casa del Sol Neighborhood Community Fair, so we're going to do it there as well. So with that, I think that covers everything, and I know I attended a lot with councilmember and colleagues this past week. Can't believe how fast the week went. Thank you.
Thank you.
Like I said, there's a lot of things going on right now. I feel like I've attended like a month's worth of events this week. On Tuesday morning, I attended the Deseret News Event. Mayor Giles was there, as well as Mayor Gallego from Phoenix, as well as experts around water conservation. We talked about water conservation and economic growth, and how those can work together for the future of our state. I think one of my biggest takeaways on that is the importance of technology and innovation and applying that to water technologies and how our use and different ways to use water. I think we have a lot of possibilities in that to augment our water supplies, to keep up with our growth and economic opportunities. That afternoon, we council toured the Real Time Crime Center at the municipal court. It blew me away. It was so, so incredible how the integration of using cameras, not only from our transportation, our city buildings, businesses that opt in, helicopters, the Axon cameras, soon we'll have a license plate recognition software in there. And so when 911 calls come in, the Real Time Crime Center kind of listens in to see if it's something that would apply to being able to follow or identify a suspect in progress and be able to communicate that information to the officers out there, where it's located, where they are, what the situation is, even on a car accident, how expansive it might be, or, you know, advising better to public safety to respond. I think it's going to be a game changer, and we're going to be much more efficient in how we address not only crime, but safety in general. It was also International Museum Day, and we did some photos at the IDEA Museum in front of their incredible mural, as well as the Natural History Museum. We also have an incredible contemporary art museum that's free in Mesa and has phenomenal exhibitions right now, so don't miss that. So ASU tour, which is incredible. Benedictine University had the graduations recently. I attended one Tuesday night, very proud of the work that Benedictine does and the students that are graduating from there. I also went to the Visitor Center at the Mesa Temple that night to listen in on the Asian family stories. We had residents from Mesa who were of Japanese descent telling their stories of how their families came here, their experience through World War II and internment camps, the farming is very, very informative and expands like we saw in Together Mesa, to really understand who, our community and our history around that. I thought it was wonderful, and I think the Visitor Center is going to continue on that storytelling of our history. Let's see, and last night, I was at the, Councilmember Heredia and I were at the Fiesta Substation doing a community meeting, talking about the first quarter results on the, what do we call it? Where they have the focus on violent crimes and the results from that, incredible. And also our Real Time Crime Center, as well as hearing from the residents what their concerns were. So that was very informative. I appreciate Fiesta PD so much, as well as all PD, but Fiesta does an incredible job in a challenged area. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Heredia?
Just yesterday as well, I was at the Guerrero Gecko's Sixth Grade Promotion. I gave the ending remarks there, a really great group of kids there. But tomorrow, I'll be opening up ceremonies of the Desert Challenge Games, and want to give a shout out to our Parks Department, who, these challenge games... give a shout out to our Parks Department, who, these challenge games are the qualifying, it's a qualifying event for the Paralympics. And so they're doing MCCs hosting track and field, and then Kino Aquatics Complex is hosting swimming events. And so in, in, you know, talking about diversity, you know, working with our disabled community, there's going to be 350 athletes from 15 countries here in the city of Mesa. So I would just want to give shout out to staff, to, working with them to host these events here in the city. So, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, it was my pleasure to be involved in a lot of those events. One thing that wasn't mentioned is we did have a groundbreaking for the new Gulfstream facility out at Gateway just a couple of days ago. This is a big deal. You know, Gulfstream is one of the, this is like a Rolls Royce, you know, of airplanes. And so the, the fact that they're investing many millions of dollars and hundreds of employees at Gateway Airport really is, elevates that, that airport to a very high-class facility, and it'll be fun to see the repercussions of that. I just want to say thank you to, I think diversity has really been the theme of today's meeting, hasn't it? It's been all the activities we've been talking about, from disabled athletes, international events, you know, to, to celebrating our, our roots with our Japanese-American, I mean, Japanese-American history in Mesa. It's just been a fun meeting to participate in and look forward to, to more celebrations like this. Mr. Brady, what does our schedule of future meetings look like?
Thank you, mayor. Just a reminder again, we won't be having a study session on May 26, but we do have scheduled our service ward luncheon for the second part of our employees at 11:30 that day. So our next study session, council meeting, or study session for the council will be June 2nd. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. We do have an agenda, a remaining agenda item. Item 4A is to convene an executive session on the pending litigation case of Sewell v. Chisler. Is there a motion to go into executive session? Thank you, Mr. Luna and Mr. Heredia. All in favor, please say aye. Aye, thank you. We will now go into executive session.